Notice of public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville. Pursuant to Chapter 551, Title V of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act notice is hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene a regular meeting on Tuesday, December the 4th, 2012, at 5:30 PM, 5:45 PM, and 6:00 PM in the commission chambers on the second floor of Brownsville City Hall located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. Workshop Item A: Discussion Regarding Redistricting of Single Member Districts.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. So before us, before us, there's two options tonight for redistricting of the single member districts. Option Plan D Modified, and both maps are right in front of you as well. This is the, this is the option that was, that was passed on the first reading of the ordinance. As you can see, the thought process behind this map was pretty distinctive lines, easy to understand, and still retaining the same, the same neighborhood identity and neighborhood concerns. So this is the plan that we came up with for that. As you can see, the deviation, the deviation by federal law has to stay under 10%. The deviation for this map is 9.5%. So we're right under the 10% threshold on that one. And on the next map, so after that one was passed, the, if you remember, the ordinance, on second reading, it was tabled to relook, to revisit this issue. I visited with various commissioners, Commissioner Villarreal had some concerns, and we came up with, we came up with this map. This was actually closer to the original map that we had looked at, and we called this Brownsville Plan D. This map maintains, you know, the white lines here that you see here are the existing district boundaries. So this map makes very little changes, but just enough changes to get us under that, that 10% threshold of deviation. And in this map, our deviation would be 8.82%. So really, with regards to deviation, you know, they're equal. These are the two options that are before you tonight, and I just wondered, we just wanted to have a workshop and be able to discuss. Mr. Rolando Rios, our counsel on this specific issue, is here to answer any legal questions that you might have. So please feel free.
Did it make it just under? Because I understood that this was the lowest deviation.
Well, when we made, when we made the change, John, remember the, the two little changes that we had to make?
Oh, the two changes?
Yeah, yeah, right here, this, this change and that change right there. It went up to eight point, 8.82 from four and a half, something like that. So those were the two, the two changes that we felt necessary. And so it really is just about 1% under the 9.5. I mean, really, we're equal with both of these plans. It is up to the commission and their wishes.
Okay, Ramiro, but like I said, under Plan A, or the first one that you showed, let's see, no, that's, that's, this is, this is the one, under that map, this is the one that was tabled the last time, right?
No, the other, the other one was tabled, that's the one that was tabled last time. And this one has 9.5% deviation.
Okay.
And then this other one, this, this, this is the new one that we came up with.
Okay, but this, in other words, what I'm asking you is, this would be a whole, doesn't it have to be, you know, done all over again?
Uh, no, the, Mr. Rios is, he, he'll just submit an amendment to the Department of Justice.
Oh, okay.
So he's here to answer any of those questions.
No, I mean, I'm just talking about the formality. I'm okay, no, I think I, I think I visited with him when we were originally looking at this, and we just said, you know, hey, give us some, some dividing lines that make some sense and it keeps the neighborhood integrity, you know, intact. And then the last time, I think Commissioner Villarreal had some question, and so that's why we tabled it and take a look at it. I'm just trying to make sure procedurally that we're okay, we can amend it, and then we can, you know, which one?
Procedurally, we're, we're able to choose whichever map tonight and, and move forward with the Department of Justice review.
Did you, which one did you?
Well, my, my concern with, with Plan D, with the amendments, which is the one we just saw before this, was that parts of, I mean, it's going to bring us right under 10%, which is the, the threshold, I think, we need to stay under. And we're giving up parts in District 4 that are right about to be developed within the next few months. So I mean, that we're going to be in the same spot of unequal representation within a few months.
So, so is this the map that would accommodate that particular?
The, the original Plan D.
That's it.
Okay, so that's, that's the one that will, will be more sustainable, is that?
That's what I have understood.
It does allow you, I mean, say, you have this point, it allows you for some growth, and you'll have more room to grow, because if you notice in that plan, District 2 is 2200 over, so you're right at, at a point where you can grow and not be allowed as a one way to go.
All right, does any, go ahead.
Yes, the original Plan D.
We do ask for, I guess, for the record, that maybe you take an individual vote, because it is in consent, but just take an individual vote on Plan D or Plan D Modified. Plan D is the one that we're going with. So Plan D, just make a motion to adopt Plan D, just for, just for the record.
That'd be, that's, that's great.
Okay.
Anybody have any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much, Ramiro. That concludes the workshop. We have an executive session, but not quite yet, right?
5:45, Mayor.
At 5:45.
So which one was it? But how do you know? Because this is friendly, that's the policy friendly. It's the same one or is it? So it's the same.
So which one? I'm not sure.
So your district's going to be?
Different ones now, so.
Forty-five?
Executive session, Item A: Consultation with Attorney Regarding Real Estate Matters Regarding, Including Potential Lease of City Property Pursuant to Sections 551.071 and 551.072 of the Texas Government Code.
Motion to move to executive session. Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, Estella, we call the regular meeting to order.
We need to go with the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the very loving for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, on the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Brad, the invocation.
Please remain standing as we do the invocation and pray. Father God, we thank you so much for this great nation that we're blessed to be a part of, and we thank you for the electoral process that just ended. Lord, now that that's over, we ask you to bless President Barack Obama. Lead and guide him as he makes the decisions on cabinet positions. Thank you for our new congressman. And Lord, we ask you to bring our leaders together to do what's right for the nation, bring their hearts and our hearts close to yours and to your plan for us and this nation. Lord, we also pray that for the leaders before us here tonight. Lead and guide them and give them divine direction as they consider the issues that are before us. Help us to make the decisions that are right for our city, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Okay, Estella, the first action on item from the executive session.
Item A: Consideration and Action on a Lease of Space for Congressional Office.
Okay, first of all, this is a action item to approve, John chosey to negotiate a, a lease agreement with a congressional office, and let the public know that it would be at a, a rate that would be consistent with what any other ordinary person would lease in the, in the area where he's looking, which would be the City Plaza. And John, would you, and the, and by virtue of the government regulations, the lease would be a governmental lease, like any other federal government lease that they provide to you, and then you would fill in the blanks.
That's, that's correct.
And the action item, if it was to be taken, would be for you to negotiate that, I think, at $1.40, which is what we find to be a reasonable price per square foot.
That's correct.
And that, and it may or may not be acceptable to the congressman, but that's what's on the floor. That would entertain a motion.
Just, just understand that if the congressman agrees to $1.40 a square foot, we'll go ahead with the lease, unless you all want me to bring it back. If it's, if he says, no, no, well, best I'll do is dollar and a quarter or whatever, then I'll bring it back to you all.
Correct. Is there a motion for allowing him to negotiate the lease?
A motion for approval for continuance with discussions with the congressman-elect at a fair market value of $1.40 per square foot for the lease of the building. Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, John.
Estella, please note my abstention. Thank you.
Mayor's report.
Simply wanted to report back, we, we did attend Amphil's 10-year anniversary in Singapore with regards to, they have approximately $12 billion worth of work. So for all of you who have any association with Amphil's and you're doing a good job, there's plenty of work to be done out there. As a matter of fact, they have slots to fill. I think it's a good and appropriate time also that there are going to be some issues regarding education, health, technology, and energy that will be significant coming up to the City Commission and to the entire city within the next two or three weeks. And I would like everybody to consider that we have to kind of plan for the future in, in taking our children into the 21st century, properly educated, properly healthy, properly assign the, the technology, and also have sufficient energy, electrical or otherwise, to provide for growth in this city. So that being said, I just wanted to make sure that we are all on the same wavelength and talking about things that will be coming forth. We don't have any specifics, nor are we authorized to give out any information at this time since we don't have it, but I do know that those issues are coming before us. Any commissioners have a report?
I just wanted to mention real quick that on Thursday at 7 o'clock, 7:00 PM, in Washington Park, we have our annual Christmas lighting ceremony, and we look forward to seeing all of you there. We will have Mrs. Claus reading to the kids. We'll have a special appearance. We've put in a word with Santa Claus. I know our city manager has a way of contacting him. So you can always bring your kids out, because we have secured Santa Claus. For all of you kids watching, he will be there, and you can come and tell him what you want, because as you know, Charlie's got connections, and one of them just happens to be Santa Claus. So we also will have gingerbread making classes and things like that, and we've got a lot of bands and choirs and things like that. So I hope to see you all there. Again, that's at Washington Park at 7:00 PM. So we hope we see you there. Thank you.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Another thing that we wanted to tell the people about was Christmas at Market Square coming up, December the 14th. In the evening from 6:00 to 9:00, we'll be playing It's a Wonderful Life within the newly renovated Market Square Building. So come out and enjoy the classic movie and check out the renovation. The following day on Saturday from 10:00 to 5:00, we'll have our Build a Better Block at Market Square, Christmas artisans and artisans from Mexico and the United States. The, the vendors that are on the square will all be coming out to celebrate Christmas. We'll have a special surprise for children, and I believe Santa's going to come that day as well.
Fantastic.
Mayor, I have a quick comment. Yesterday, I was honored to have been invited to Matamoros's Segundo Informe de Gobierno, where the mayor in Matamoros and his, and his commission addressed the city and, and bring everyone up to speed on the projects they, they've done. And I was very impressed. I hadn't been to the interior of Matamoros in, in quite a while, and it's, it's a very clean city. They have excellent initiatives as far as their tire recycling program. In just one year, they got rid of half of their tire issue from the past 20 years. So they're making, they're making great strides in, in terms of making it a better city, improving the infrastructure. And as far as a gesture to, to show our appreciation to them as our sister city, I wanted to make it out there. And I had the pleasure of being joined by one of our esteemed citizens, Alexander Stillman. And also, I had the great pleasure of sitting with the Guatemalan consul. So that was very delightful. Came back straight to the Christmas parade, and I was delighted to see the child day staff working hard, and they made it a great success, and our city staff. I saw a lot of directors out there, and I appreciate that. Our city crews, thank you all. That's it.
Thanks. Employee of the Month.
Mayor, members of the commission, please help me introduce our employee of the month for December, Mary DeLyon. Mary's our final employee of the month for the year. We'll have our banquet this Friday, and we'll announce the employee of the year at the banquet. We congratulate Mary. She's been with the Human Resources Department for 14 years now. She is very thorough in her abilities to handle state, federal, and of course, all our policies, and she does very well in recruiting and identifying employees that are, that could be viable to our city, as she does backgrounds and things like that on, on, on the applicants. She also helps with, with a variety of things. One of the things we're very proud of her is she helps our retirees who come in and ask her different possibilities and questions, and she has helped, well, one is specifically, she helped one of our retirees who we felt was being defrauded of his, of his paychecks and things like that, his retirement checks, and took the right steps in reporting it, and we had a result, and, and helped the retirees. So we're, she goes beyond the call of duty doing things like that for us. As employee of the month, she gets the pin. Ladies watch. And a plaque for December, employee of the month. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
And as like I noted, she's eligible for the employee of the year at the banquet on Friday. Congratulations, Mary.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I would like to say that I'm very grateful and honored to receive this award. Thank you very much. Christmas came early for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Consent Agenda Items A through M.
Quick question, Mayor?
Sure.
City Secretary, we had asked for the smoking ordinance to be presented or to be discussed today, and it's under a sec, under consent for a second. Do we pull that out and have discussion now?
Yes, we have to ask. We have a vote.
Do you want to approve A through, ABC and, ABC and E and all others, and then open D?
Yeah, we can, we can go A through, through C. I think E also has to have.
All the way to?
E, E, oh, A through, A through C, and then F through.
F through N.
Through M. Motion to approve A through C and F through M. Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, so now, we will address D, Item D. Would you read that, Madam Secretary?
Well, actually, we also have, I believe, I was tabled 1016 and 1106. Do we vote on that one?
We need to read Item D if we're going to, if we're going to discuss that first.
I'm sorry?
Are we going to read Item D first?
This is a smoking ban, number D.
No, I know, but I believe, um, L was tabled 1016 and 1106.
Oh, the wet restaurant? To prove?
That didn't pass for first reading?
It passed first reading, L passed first reading, and it was tabled on November the 6th.
You want to exclude that? You have to have amendment?
We'll need to pull it. No, it passed only on first.
It passed the first.
And tabled for second reading on the 6th.
The first reading passed?
First reading passed. Second has not passed. It's been tabled twice.
Pass the first reading, Mark. What's the, what's the Robert? Okay, Commissioner, did you want to pull that one out?
No, no.
No?
We, we got it clarified at the last.
Okay, all right. Then, then, there were still, yeah, D and E are. Then, there were still, yeah, D and E are the two items that have been pulled.
Right.
And let's address D first, and I think we ought to read it.
Item D of consent agenda items, approval on second and final reading of ordinance number 2012-1556 by repealing Chapter 54, Article 6, Smoking in Public Places, Sections 54-171 through 54-179, and enacting ordinance number 2012-1556, Chapter 54, Article 6, Smoking in Public Places, by replacing it with Sections 54-171 through 54-188.
All right. This is the second reading. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for approval?
Second.
I'm sorry, what was the motion? Move to approve?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
I think we have to take a head count here.
Right.
One, two, three, four.
Okay.
To approve. All those against?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion carries. E, approve?
Item E, approval on second and final reading of ordinance number 2012-1361-B, an ordinance to adopt a new single-member district boundaries.
Want to continue? Okay. No, this, I mean, the approval of this one was based upon, this will be a second reading on which map?
Of the first plan, do we have? So, if we're going to, on that plan, so if we're going to change, if we're going to adopt a new plan, it has to, it's a public hearing and first reading.
Right.
So, we have to open it to public hearing and then do the first reading and pass whatever plan.
And for those of you who missed the workshop, I think the commissioner that had some issues was Commissioner Villarreal, and he opted for Plan, it's the other plan, right?
The original Plan D.
The other one.
Can you put it on the map? Okay, because that allows for us to have growth and not be in violation of the variance of population within the district. So, unless somebody wants to approve the first plan, I would suggest that we have a motion to adopt this plan and go ahead and have the first reading next time, right?
No, you can have the first reading today, right?
Today, because it will be the first reading, not Plan D.
Okay.
So, you're going to have a public hearing and first reading, so I think you would have to make a motion to...
This would be a motion to...
To open public hearing.
To open public hearing.
Motion to open public hearing.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. I'll listen to from the public.
We'll do closed public hearing?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, motion, action motion to approve for the first reading.
Plan D.
Motion to approve Plan D.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Is this first reading of that?
This is the first reading. I think Stephanie, is that, would that be the next one?
I'm getting there. Boards and Commissions, item five, consideration and action to appoint members to the Brownsville Citizens Advisory Committee.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm here to present to you the applicants for the Brownsville Citizens Advisory Committee. There's a couple of things that I would like to note. We had four, I'm sorry, five applicants. However, we recently changed, with your approval, the composition of our Brownsville Citizens Advisory Committee from, it used to be 12, and now it's nine. We were having some issues with attendance, so with your approval, we went ahead and did that. So, with that, there is three slots open for the mayor, and everyone else has one slot. So, all of them are filled. So, basically, everyone down here, except for Joe Rodriguez, are available for at-large positions or for the mayor. Even though they live in those districts, the only available slots are at-large and the mayor.
I have a question.
Yes.
I'm sorry. There was a person that's not on that list that I had spoke, actually, both Commissioner Villarreal and I spoke with about serving, and that person had filled out an application with a different board on it, and I asked several times whether or not that could just be changed, or whether that gentleman needed to just change, to come in and fill out a whole new application, and I never received an answer.
Okay, I can look into it. Do you remember the name? Renee.
She's with the...
Why don't we do this, in other words?
If we could save one spot, that's what I'm asking, because that one person that John and I met was very interested and very qualified.
Why don't we, yeah, so for the sake of now, you've got one, two, three, four, five that are actually on there, right?
Well, there's actually four that are eligible. Rodney Gomez is not eligible because he sits on two others.
No, what I'm saying to you is, the present board members, you have five.
Yes.
And then, the applicants are down at the bottom.
Yes.
And you need actually four spaces, and what the commissioner's asking is if we can fill in three and allow that other space to be, so we can consider an additional applicant. Is that okay with you?
We can, we can. With this, with what we select today, we will have a quorum, which is my concern because we're bringing our substantial amendment next to that committee. So, yes, we could.
Okay, so I'll entertain motions for three slots, or one at a time, whichever one you all decide.
Can I make a real quick comment? Stephanie, this is the first time I had seen an application for Mr. Joe Rodriguez.
Yes.
And I'd be interested in speaking to him. I haven't spoken to him.
Sure.
So, could I make the appointment next week after I've spoken to Mr. Rodriguez already?
Um, I suppose...
In other words, because he didn't specify that he wanted a citizens advisory, he just says that he's on arts and entertainment.
Yes.
And, but now, he's considered for the BCAC appointment.
Yes.
And I need an appointment to the board, and I've read his profile, and it looks promising. I would just like to speak to him if you all don't mind, and I'll be glad to do it next week if you can put it on the agenda.
That's not a problem. He specifically asked to sit on this committee. I guess he just filled out the application as such. So, yes, you can.
It's not a problem.
And he's the one who would sit in your district.
Correct.
And the other available for at-large.
Like I told, I really don't have a problem with it. I'd just like to sit down and have a couple of minutes of his time.
Sure.
Thank you.
So, maybe we fill two spots. We're getting slower and slower, okay? I'll entertain some motions, guys. Any nominations here? Stephanie needs to have more people so she can have quorums.
I'll make a motion to appoint Rodney Gomez.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye?
That's the one that's ineligible because that's on two...
Oh, I'm sorry. I just saw the district choose.
He's already served his terms, so he's not eligible. You only have four on that bottom section that are eligible.
Okay, I'll make a motion to appoint Pique Patel. Pique, okay, yeah, Pique Patel, we know who he is.
Okay, that's a motion for Mr. Patel. Second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. One more.
Motion to appoint Esmeralda Cavazos.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. You've got two more members. So, now you should have seven. You should be able to get a quorum fairly easy, okay?
So, we'll bring it back next week.
Thank you very much, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Public hearings, I think we got two.
Public hearing, item six. Public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 2012-670-F to amend Chapter 58 of the Housing Code of Ordinances by repealing Article 2 of Chapter 58 Housing and enacting a new Article 2.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Commission. We're here asking to amend Chapter 58, Article 2 of the Housing Code. The reason why is to adopt the 2006 ICC Property Maintenance Code and to implement a multifamily dwelling complex inspection program. The purpose of this multifamily dwelling complex inspection program is to safeguard the life, health, safety, and welfare of the property of occupants of the multifamily dwelling complexes. The program would require rental property owners to register their units with the city of Brownsville and undergo a yearly inspection of their property. The inspection would verify that the rental properties are in compliance and accepted standards for building and structures within our city limits. Currently, we have a complaint-based system. The city currently has a complaint-based system that requires for a tenant or a citizen to report to our department any code violations. Our department then performs an inspection. If a deficiency is found or a code violation, we then require the property to be in compliance. We wish to augment this program by creating a systematic yearly inspection of multifamily rental units that would assist in discovery, remedy, the deficiencies found. This two-pronged approach would ensure that any citizen may continue to report any deficiencies and also allow for yearly inspections that would address problems found by our staff independent of a reported complaint. This approach can aid in citizens that may not have reported the deficiencies due to lack of knowledge of basic code standards or fear of retaliation or familiar with the process. Here's four examples that the tenants did call our office complaining. As you can see on this top right picture, there's the electrical panel board. The cover is completely, well, it's missing. Right next to it, we have the light switch. The cover is missing, and right here on the bottom, you have the receptacle, electric receptacle that is also missing. So, all three covers are missing, and it's very easy for anybody to get hurt. In this picture right here on the, we have the staircase. We also have a step that is broken, not level, and it's very easy for anybody going up the stairway or coming down that can get easily hurt. As you can see on this picture right here, the stairway, concrete stairway is not level. It's broken, it's chipped, and then your floor deck, the wood is rutted, and there's plywood that is being placed on top of this hole right here. And then also, you have your concrete piers that are missing to stabilize the patio. This picture right here, you have your 2x12s that have been replaced. They was all rutted, along with their bracing. Now, all of these complaints that were called, they did come to our office, they got a permit, and they were inspected.
Mr. Gomez, you came into our office, to my office to discuss this ordinance, and I specifically asked you the question, what is wrong with the current system that we have? And from our discussions, I felt that the problem was that the system, the current process that we have was that an individual had to call in the complaint. And so, what is stopping our staff, the city staff, from inspecting these properties? Is there something in the ordinance that's stopping the staff from being able to do that without having a citizen complaint?
No, ma'am. What we have now, right now, is that if the inspector is out there doing inspections, we'll go ahead and address the issue. But if these tenants do call to our office and they're complaining about any build code violations, then we'll go out there and address the issue. With this program, we will do an annual inspection, go out there, and we don't have to wait for this, let me go back to this, we don't have to wait for these problems or deficiencies to be there like that for some time, and it is very easy for anybody to get hurt. If we do conduct our, if this program does pass tonight, we will be able to address these issues as soon as possible.
But right now, as it stands, if, because when I was campaigning, I know I did the block walking, and there was a lot of deficiencies in units that are obvious to the public that you don't have to go in to know that that's a rundown building, that that's, and people are living there. And so, can our staff go in there and address that without having a complaint?
Right now, we do not have the, well, we do not have the 2006 Property Maintenance Code adopted, so with this program along with what we're implementing, we would be able to do that.
So, you're not able to do that?
Well, we have a, we can only do so much with the current Property Maintenance Code.
And the reason I'm asking is because it's concerning to me that we're asking to charge a fee, and if we're not able to deal with the current ordinance, then we're asking them to pay for that inspection, the yearly inspection, but I'm asking if the current ordinance allows you to go do those inspections without having to pass this so that we can charge our citizens more money for a permit that we should be doing already? That's my question.
Okay, can, I'll go, I'll get there right now on my presentation. Is that all right, Commissioner?
I had a real quick question. That open electricity box, was that the same box that almost electrocuted that young little girl?
No, ma'am. This is a different site.
That was a, because if we had have gone in, that little girl would not have been electrocuted if this had been passed earlier.
Correct, Commissioner. That was a different apartment complex. It was an electrical meter pack. This is a electrical panel board.
Okay, no, I know that this would have helped her if it had been passed earlier, though.
Commissioner, can I move? Abduction of the 2000 ICC Property Maintenance Code, provisions of this code shall apply to all existing residential, non-residential structures and all existing premises, constitute a minimum requirement standards for premises, structures, equipment, and facilities, like, for example, light, ventilation, space, life safety, safety from fire, other hazards, for safe sanitary maintenance, and the responsibility of owners, operators, occupants, and lastly, the occupancy of existing structures, premises for administration enforcement. What are the inspection program requirements? The program would require for any apartment complex comprised of three or more units to register with the city of Brownsville permitting department to obtain a yearly license. The process would involve a written application fee, coordination between the apartment complex and the city inspections department. There's exceptions. A multifamily dwelling complex whose original construction was completed on or after January 1st of 2012 shall be exempt from the director's periodic inspection for two years from the date the original certificate of occupancy was issued. The fee requirements described above shall not include a dwelling unit on a college, university, or seminary occupied by a student or students. Okay? Now, there's an exception, I'm sorry. Also here on this one, of course, if there's a change of ownership or there's deficiencies, just because there's two years that they're not in the program, we can go back and do the inspection if we get a call within those two years. Department responsibilities is the inspection would encompass a percentage of units, but if too many deficiencies are found, the city holds the right to inspect all units. We currently propose a fee of $50 for the yearly license and a $12 per unit per year inspection fee. For example, the complex comprised of three units would require a $50 application fee plus $36 inspection fee. The complex operator would remit to the city 86 per year. All licenses would expire on December 31st of each year. I don't know if that answers your question, Commissioner. Projected information phase for this program, phase one would be the passage of this ordinance by the commission tonight. Phase two would be, we then require for all rental properties that fall under this program to have applied, submitted to an inspection, and be issued a license null later January 11th of 2014. This will allow for time passage and all 2013 to implement the program, provide educational workshops for rental owners and tenants. We will have, we will hold those workshops there at the city plaza to educate all the property owners that own three properties or more within the city, within our city. In June of this year, I traveled to the city of Garland to learn how they're operating and implementing this program, along with two staff members from my office. We have been working very closely. Since then, I think we work with, changing, or learning on the programs. Also, there are the two, we have two representatives here from the city of Garland, they're present here. They have a short presentation. They've been very helpful to us in writing down this ordinance with your permission, Mayor, and members of the City Commission. They'd like to do a short just presentation.
Sure. I think they're over there. Welcome to Brownsville.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, honorable Commissioner, citizens of Brownsville, good evening. We are, my name is Rui Ortizio. I am the code compliance manager in charge of the housing standards inspection for the city of Garland, and here with me is the field supervisor for the program. We are here today pretty much to let you know that the city of Garland is here to help with your proposed ordinance.
Thank you.
We are here, the communication started back in November, I believe, when they contacted me asking about the rental inspection for the city of Garland, and we've opened our doors and... And we've opened our doors and our resources to, to your staff to, to help with the ordinance. Little history of our program, the city of Garland has two inspection program. One is the multifamily and the other one is a single family. The multifamily program, it's been in existence since, in the eighties. It's about 30 years now. We have about 222 complexes and close to 19,000 units. And the average age of our complexes are 29 years old. So we, we feel that we have to inspect the, the properties for the life safety and welfare of our, our citizens. What we find in our inspections are items or deficiencies that the, the tenants are so fearful to, to talk to the landlord. We've discovered bed bugs. There's an outbreak and we address that. Hoarding of animals and electrical and similar deficiencies that Mr. Gomes proposed, I mean, shown you. Again, we're here to, to help. In case you have any questions, we're here to share our lessons learned and experiences. The multifamily program in our city has very or not known objections or objections or resistance because the, the fee that we charge is to run a business. It's, it's a permit fee. It's not an inspection fee. We don't charge inspection fee. The, the $13 per unit in the city of Garland is to cover the cost of the inspection. We have three inspectors and then two clerical to, to manage the program.
Can I, can I ask you this? You've been in existence for 30 years, or this program has. Have y'all kept any statistics or data with regards to the number of, you know, the safety of your city? Has it improved over those 30 years because of these inspections? Has it been effective to that regard?
In the last six years that I've been manager of the, the program, it has increased significantly. Actually, when I took over, my, my boss testified to the city council that the program was a C+. And he recently testified that the program is now a B or a B+. I have the statistics and I can forward it to Mr. Gomes.
Is it, is it, is it proof significant? In other words, is it efficient and is it a safety-producing kind of situation for the city of Garland?
Yes, it has, to answer that question.
Okay. Commissioners?
I, from what I heard from our building director, the building inspector, inspections director, he said it's not only, it not only addresses safety, but also a lot of your aesthetics. I mean, he told me when he was picked up by you all, which we're very grateful for, you all treated him very well, someone made a comment that they were going through, through a bad part of town. And he was amazed because it was actually very nice. So, so I mean, we're looking forward to, to that.
Okay. Yes, it has affected the aesthetics because in the city of Garland, the program includes inspection of all the exteriors and about 10 to 15% of the interiors. And we don't come in, the exteriors are open. We inspect it yearly, no appointments. But on the inside, we respect the privacy of the tenants. We have to knock, hey, we're here, can we please come in to make sure that you're safe? And while there, the, the inspectors look at everything. Improper storage, trash, electrical, smoke detectors, and it's an all-inclusive inspection.
He said 10 to 15% of the interiors, that's the only thing that you inspect? That's the percentage that you inspect interior?
The 10 to 15% is the norm. But if we find that there are more evidence that we need to do a comprehensive inspection, we will inspect every square footage of the, of the apartment interior dwelling.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Anyone else wish to?
By the way, thank you for sharing that information with us. It's nice to see that we have other Texas cities that like to extend out to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know, thank you.
I think it's, we have to open up to Roberto there.
Roberto Este, citizen of Brownsville. I think Mr. Gomes has to also understand that implementing the $50 inspection fee and $12 for the per-unit fee, of course, that cost will be brought to the renters. It doesn't matter, you say the landlord was gonna pay for this, yeah, but he's gonna raise the, the rent to pay for this. You have to understand that too. Another thing is you talk about the multi-inspections, but we do have a lot of houses here that are being rented, called, and he spoke about it right now, the gentleman, a single-family rental inspections. We seen them here, Mayor, and you seen them around. And you can tell who's renting, who's not renting. Those houses are terrible, especially in the District Four, right here in Washington, Elizabeth. There are some very, very bad houses that need to be inspected, but this is not gonna cover that because this is for three units or more, not single units. You have to understand that. So, and even in the Galaxia, there are some houses that are terrible because people don't, how you call it, take care of the units. And if you're gonna be charging this, of course, you must understand, it will be passed on to the renter. But as far as doing it, it's, it's a good idea because I think you had a, an enforcement that you had inspectors of the city would go into subdivisions to tell them you have too much brush, too much junk, the houses look terrible, you have too many dogs, all of those things. You used to do that. I haven't seen it done anymore. But remember, the cost will go to the, the people. It doesn't, the landlord doesn't care. He'll pay you the 50 bucks and $12, but the, the people that barely can live, and you know Brownsville has a shortage on housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any other public comments?
Was there somebody back there?
Okay. Would you come up here, sir?
It happened so fast, but I was here to, on the post-list of item L on the agenda.
Uh, L is already passed. Okay.
So.
It's, 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 thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close.
More to close?
Oh, wait, you have somebody else?
I'm sorry. Forgive me, go ahead.
No problem. Hello, good afternoon.
Would you state your name, please, for the record?
My name is Moises Molina. And I'm just trying to make a point. I understand where you're trying to rescue some of the, of the money to be avoided to the, to the citizens. And that's kind of where I'm trying to, to go in terms of what the previous person also talked about. It's a good idea. It sounds very good. I think that it should be done. I don't know why, why the current code would prohibit the inspections to be done. I, I don't understand. I would have to read it. But the cost involved, I, that's what I also wanna bring forward because it's on top of insurance, on top of maintenance costs, on top of all of that as an owner. It's, I'm thinking for 10 units downtown, right now, it's gonna be $12 per unit, $120 a year, and $50 for the application every year. That's gonna be something that, it's gonna be a concern, especially for other owners also. So I, I, that's not the reason I'm here, but it's good that it was brought in this session. So I just wanna make sure that the commission understands that, that it's gonna be another cost added. But I think it should be part of the building department to take care of that. And I don't see why there should be a charge for that because it's for the safety. Why should I pay for the safe, for the city to take care of us when that's the city's job if we're not doing our part as owners? I think if we are taking care of our properties and they're well-maintained, there's no reason for us to be paying for an inspection. If the permitting department comes and sees something and they bring it out to our attention, then we should be fined. And then we should be requested for that permit to be, I don't know, a remodeling or fixing something up if it's under the jurisdiction of the department, then we should pay for that permit and be subject to a fine. That, I think, is scarier than, oh, it's just $12 per unit. But if you have more than 10 units, it's gonna be, every year it's gonna be an added cost. That it's not gonna come out of our pocket, we're gonna move it forward to the people renting, that's for sure. And we don't wanna do that, but also we need to make sure that the department, we do support that they do that, but I don't think we should be paying for it. I think a fine base should do it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Molina.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your, those are good thoughts.
I have a question, Mayor. I'm sorry if this has already been discussed, but the revenue from, the revenues from the fees that will be incurred by the, the property owners, where, where would that money be utilized for?
Let me, let me answer some questions that the gentleman asked. We, right now, we're gonna have, okay, the revenues, according to our documents, ma'am, Commissioner, we have properties of 220 properties, units, we have 10,515. The, the revenue total will be $139,030. And expenses, the way we, we rate it is, will be $136,000 with eight inspectors, I mean, eight employees, five inspectors, three admins, okay? Now, these fees that we're implementing is for additional because we, we, we don't know whether we're gonna need additional employees. So that's the reason we're charging for this program.
Mr. Gomes, and he brought up a very good point where it says it's in the enforcement that we're having the issues right now. Because if we are enforcing, if we go out there, get our inspectors to, to take care of what they need to be taking care of, we could actually be generating revenue by the fees that are charged because of the violations that are out there instead of having to go this route and charging them for something that they're gonna pass on to the people that we're trying to protect.
Correct. But again, we go back to, these calls are coming in only as they are called in. We're not, with this program.
I understand. So that's the, that's where I was getting at. The first point that I made was at the complaint level. That's where we're at. We're just waiting for a complaint to be called in. And maybe we should be looking at the ordinance and changing the ordinance where we can have our inspectors go out there and do the inspections and do the fines on the, the violations that we're finding out there.
I, I think that's what he's asking for, is a yearly inspection, which we don't have, which most cities do have.
But we can implement that without having to charge a yearly fee.
Well, the, the only problem, I think, what we're, we're looking at, I think probably the city of Garland will have the same, you know, you don't have enough funds to cover all the inspections, so you do it on a yearly basis. I mean, I, that's just what makes sense to me. Now, I think the other gentleman brought up a good point saying there, you know, if, you know, if he's got 10 units, he's gonna pay, you know, each unit's gonna pay a dollar extra a month. It's really what it amounts to, to, to the guy that's being running it out. There, I, you know, it, it seems that you have, you know, good, good arguments on both sides, but I think that a yearly inspection is, is definitely something that's needed one way or the other because you can't do it random. I mean, you see it, I see it, we all see it, but, you know, I mean, that doesn't mean that every inspector out there is, is looking at the same thing. There, there needs to be a remedy. I mean, I think, I think.
But even if you get to, to, even if this passes, your enforcement is not all that strong because you're saying, if I, if I read it correctly, your enforcement does not allow for a fee to be charged. It's gonna be left at the discretion of the, the inspector or the department or whom?
The, the, the method that's being utilized right now is complaint-based. What we're finding is many people don't wanna call.
No, and I understand that.
They don't wanna call us because of fear of retaliation, like you know, that they don't wanna be evicted and things like that. We can't just walk into somebody's home and do an inspection.
And that's why I'm asking, maybe if the current ordinance does not allow that, Charlie? If the current ordinance does not, does not allow that, then maybe we need to amend the ordinance.
The ordinance is putting these people that rent and are in the business of renting, the ordinance puts them on notice that we were going to do inspection at their business location. And we're going to inspect the exterior and interior of the, of the, of the complex that they may own and rent to people.
And can you do that with the current ordinance, Charlie?
We are not in the, in the, we're not being able to go inside a people, a person's home and, and just inspect without the consent. And for us to be able to get consent now, we must have reason to be in that house. Or we can't just walk into people's homes. We can go now if we have suspicion that there's somebody living in poor conditions. The ordinance, if passed by you, allows us to contact the owner of the business, of the business, be able to do an inspection of randomly selected rooms and be able to go and with him, knock on the door and inspect. Now, what's being brought up is true. We eventually wanna get into inspecting homes. Gradually, we wanna, we wanna start off with this first. What we're seeing is this is gonna give us a tremendous amount of additional work. So this is what, this is the reason we're charging the fee. This is the reason we went to Garland and other cities to discuss this with them and to see how they introduce this to their commission. So we can have, now, eventually, we'll come back and we'll say, you know what, some of these places are free of any issues and we need to give them a, a, a random, this year we're not gonna do an inspection of your place.
The problem that I have with that is.
We're not charging the person that lives in the house, we are charging the person that owns the business.
And it's gonna be passed on to the tenant, the individuals that we're trying to protect.
But if it's being passed on, if it's being passed, if it's being passed on for a good reason, because they are assured to live in, in conditions that we are finding are not viable right now, it is, it all relates to our wellness programs and everything else. The, the people must live in a good place.
I understand that part.
We are, the four pictures, the four pictures that we showed you up here, we showed you four photographs, some of those were called in anonymously. People don't wanna be involved, they don't wanna be, they don't want us to tell who called and things like that. Luckily, we were able to resolve those things. It's really slowing us down in identifying and resolving issues like this promptly. This way, we, we're gonna go through a year of counseling with them and then introducing them to this ordinance before we even enact it. So hopefully, in that one year, we're gonna pass out pamphlets, information as to what they do, what they need to do, so when we go finally start an inspection process, they understand that if they have issues, they need to correct them for now. And we, we feel that 30, 40, 50, 60, 70% of those people will do that.
I have a question. Have we done the math and is it feasible to look at and say those people that are not violators could be refunded a portion of their money or somehow be rewarded for that? And the violators should be penalized?
And that's something that we need to look at as we proceed. We, like I'm saying, we can come back and say, these people have been, we, we'll pass an amendment to the ordinance that these people have been in compliance for the last two or three years, so we need to give them relief and maybe not inspect them for a two or three-year period.
Mr. Kavler, how, how many do we have on staff now and how long has that been the case? Cause I know our population continues to grow and it has over the years.
How many?
How many staff members, inspectors do we certainly have?
And I understand that our inspectors do dual responsibilities. It's not just inspecting locations. We really, it's, it's, it's pretty hard to say we have inspectors that are fully inspecting area, businesses that have conditions of this and this and that because they're also inspecting locations where new buildings are coming up and things like that. So it's a variety of responsibilities. How many do we?
Eight.
How long has that been the case? So we've had eight inspectors, one second. We've had eight inspectors over the duration of population, the population increasing.
Right.
Okay. I know Garland is here and they're of comparable size. How many inspectors do you have?
For the single, for the multifamily program, we only have three. That's all they do. They don't do single family, they don't do single, just dedicated to the multifamily inspection.
Total inspectors, how many do you have, sir? If you mind sharing that with us?
We have 42 in our department.
You see? So I don't, I don't think it's fair to say that the problem necessarily falls with the ineptness of staff. It has to do with the fact we don't have enough staff.
Well, and I think, the big thing is about this ordinance is it allows you, it allows us to contact the owner of the property and be able to inspect within some of the apartment, some of the apartments where people are actually living.
But I don't think we're addressing the issue, and Commissioner Samora brought it up, that maybe we're understaffed for the population that we have. And adding this additional task would, would probably bring in additional inspectors, but that's not gonna solve the problem. The problem is that maybe we're understaffed, that we can get that staff to be doing these inspections and making sure that the inspections and making sure that the ones that are in violation are gonna be charged for the violations that they have.
Yeah, penalized.
Penalized, instead of penalizing everybody.
Well, if we find violations, they are going to be asked to correct it promptly or, and/or issued a fine. We don't, we don't wanna start off with fines right away, we wanna start off with compliance. And we're gonna invite any and all, we're gonna invite everyone, even they have one, if they have one, one, one home for rent or two homes for rent, to the orientation that we do, to get everybody, uh, and we can come back to the commission later and say, we wanna inspect all rentals in the city.
I, I wanna make sure we address this problem correctly, because it is a problem that needs to be addressed, and we need to address it uniformly across the board with everybody, regardless of how many tenants you have in there, whether you have a single-family unit, a multifamily unit, or three-plus units. We need to address it with everybody and starting at the same level, not bringing it in sequence. And so, if it's a staffing problem that we have within our department, that's where we need to start, so that we can get on the right track, because it is unfair for these tenants to be paying their rent and the landlords not be taking care of themselves, but where are we helping them?
Okay.
It's all of them.
I have a question.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Kavler, it, are the funds that are generated here going to be able to allow you to hire more inspectors?
Yes, ma'am.
How many inspectors do you anticipate that might be?
If we hire, if we hire, uh, two or three employees, uh, one staff person, you know, like Mr. Gamas said, from P U B records and, and, and how many properties we have to inspect, how many apartments we have to inspect, how many properties, uh, if we make a hundred and thirty-nine thousand in the, in the fee, we're gonna, and we decide to use our people or hire two or three people, uh, we're gonna spend a hundred and thirty-six to a hundred and forty thousand dollars on this. We're, it's not a, it's not meant to generate money, it's meant to handle a problem we feel that is serious in our city.
Oh, it is very serious. But your enforcement, your fines for the landlords or slum landlords will also generate revenue for the city, and I think that'll be better to resolve the matter and it'll facilitate addressing everybody.
We wanna initiate this, we wanna initiate this in 2014. Our mission at first is going to be to try to get all these landlords, all these properties, to comply to the ordinance, uh, at first. If, if they are fined a year from now, uh, a year from January, it is because they did not comply with this ordinance when they were given a year to do so.
How long is this gonna take us to get to your single-family units where the, those families are living in those poor conditions as well?
Well, we can work on that if you want and present it in January, but we want, we wanna, we wanna start off with this now.
You know, okay. Any other public comments?
I think it's also a good time to mention that if somebody is living in poor conditions and this message has reached them, they know they have the option to contact our permit department and make sure that, this is our goal, our goal is not to charge you, our goal is to make sure that you're living in a safe and secure home, and we're here to help you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Can I, can I hear a motion to close public session?
Motion to close?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, is there an action item on this one?
Approved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Motion.
Who said nay?
I did.
Motion carries. Item number seven.
Item number seven, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty-twelve dash nine oh six, to rezone from dwelling Z classification to heavy industrial J classification for two hundred and seventy-four point forty-one eighth tract located near Old Dallas Road and FM five eleven.
Mayor, City Commission, this is a, a rezoning case that came before the Planning and Zoning Commission, um, last week, and, uh, it's to rezone this entire parcel of land. Uh, this is, uh, five eleven, this corridor right here, and this is Old Dallas Road. Um, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously for approval of this, uh, of this rezone, and, uh, we ask that you approve it tonight.
Entertained a motion?
Motion to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry, this has gotta be a public hearing, forgive me. Uh, any comments?
What's going to, to go there? I'm sorry, why are we rezoning? What's going to move in?
Uh, this is a project that was brought to us by the Economic Development Group, and-
It's, it's, uh, public utilities.
To close public hearing, second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Item number nine, consideration in action on resolution number twenty-twelve dash one hundred, to amend section seven oh three harassment of the city's personnel policy manual for employees dated April eighteenth, two thousand and six by repealing existing section seven oh three and enacting a new section seven oh three, workplace discrimination and harassment.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the commission. Uh, we had previously presented a workshop to the city commission on this policy. Uh, it basically does three different things. Uh, one is, first of all, it, it's a much stricter policy in terms of not tolerating workplace harassment. Uh, second, it, it turns the current, uh, policy seven oh three, which is in the personnel policy manual, uh, into more than just a policy against sexual harassment, it's a true workforce diversity policy, uh, basically, uh, stating that it values a diverse workforce, and it provides protections not only for, uh, gender, but age, gender, religion, race, but also sexual orientation and gender identity. Um, does this do more than what the law requires? Yes, it does, um, but it's, it's, this is a policy, a policy decision that this commission would make. Uh, in my opinion, even though it broadens the class of, uh, persons to whom it offers protections, it reduces the city's liability by being a much stricter policy, and I'll give you two examples. One, it would require supervisors who become aware of it to report it to Human Resources instead of simply overlooking it. Uh, two, it would prohibit voluntary consensual sexual, uh, relationships between supervisors and direct subordinates. There is one change to the policy that had, I had added, uh, and this was based on the suggestion from, uh, the Human Resources Department, you will find a footnote, uh, explaining, I think I may have handed out all my... There was a footnote explaining under, uh, section I, the complaint process, advice and information. Uh, we had added, uh, we didn't want anyone thinking that they, they could simply informally, uh, a supervisor thinking they could informally handle these things, uh, so we basically, I, I added the term under advice and information. This section refers to situations where the employee wishes to obtain advice or information about the policy and complaint process in order to decide whether or not to make a complaint. Department supervisors or H R representatives who become aware of the actual violations of this policy, um, must comply with their obligations under section H, uh, which basically assures that complaints will not be ignored and will be properly addressed in, in whatever way is appropriate for, under those circumstances. Uh, do you have any questions?
Any questions? Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
To approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Number ten.
Item ten, consideration in action to adopt budget amendment resolution number twenty-twelve dash zero ninety-nine, to amend the general fund by providing funding for the Stagman building and providing additional funding for operations of the airport.
Honorable Mayor, members of the city commission, there's, uh, budget amendment to the, uh, general fund, and there's also another budget amendment for the airport fund. The, uh, the, uh, excuse me, the, uh, general fund, uh, budget amendment is to provide funding for the, uh, Stag, Stagman building payment of four hundred and sixty thousand, one ninety-four, and we're also, uh, transferring, uh, from the general fund to the airport, five hundred thousand dollars. Um, so, uh, we are recommending that the city commission adopt this, uh, resolution this evening.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number eleven.
Number eleven, consideration in action to adopt ordinance number twenty-twelve dash fifteen sixty-five, authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of approximately twelve million, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in aggregate principal amount of City of Brownsville, Texas Combination Tax and Revenue Certificates of Obligation Series twenty-twelve A, securing the payment thereof by authorizing the lev, the levy of an annual ad valorem tax and a pledge of certain surplus revenues of the city's municipal landfill system, and approving and authorizing the execution of a paying agent registrar agreement, a purchase contract, and official statement, and all other instruments and procedures related thereto.
Honorable Mayor, honorable Mayor, members of the city commission, I'm gonna summarize what has taken place regarding the, uh, the issuance of these certificates of obligation. On October thirtieth, uh, the city commission approved the plan of finance and the notices of intention to issue approximately twelve point five million in C O's. Uh, the notice of intentions to issue the C O's were, were published in the Brownsville Herald on two dates, on October nineteenth and October twenty-sixth. Uh, this is the, uh, notice of intention to issue those, uh, C O's. Uh, if you notice at the very bottom of this particular notice, it says that, that the city commission would authorize the issuance of these C O's on Tuesday, December fourth, twenty-twelve, which is, uh, tonight. Uh, and this is what was, uh, originally, uh, thought of way back at the very start, uh, which would include the, uh, the various projects, the West Rail relocation project, the, uh, of two million dollars, the, uh, local share for the Texas Safe Shelter for the main library of, of three million, uh, the airport hangar facility construction project of one point one million, notice that that's a taxable issue, all others are all tax exempt. Uh, also, the purchase of the, uh, building on, uh, thirty-four zero four East Adams of two point three million. We also added streets, sidewalks, and bus, bicycle trails for three million, and, and then we added the old, uh, Texas National Guard armory. Uh, that was at the very beginning, however, on, um, and, and the October notices indicated the city commission would authorize on, on, on the fourth, however, an amended plan of finance, along with the notices of intention to issue, and additional one, one million two fifty in C O's were approved by the city commission on November sixth. Uh, the amendment included the, uh, two items, the Brownsville Metro maintenance building improvements, and also, uh, additional money for, uh, an emergency dome. Now, the notices of the intention to issue the amended C O's were published in the Herald on the ninth and sixteenth. Now, I'm mentioning two dates here, or four dates, because there was an amendment to the original, uh, uh, issuance of C O's. Uh, now, this, uh, no, this two notices indicated that the city commission would authorize the issuance of the entire C O's on December eleventh, and this is what was, uh, published, and at the very bottom it says that this is gonna be taking place on November, I mean, December the eleventh. And we added, again, this schedule adds the Brownsville Metro Yard Building and the Texas, uh, Shell Shelter, uh, for six hundred thousand dollars, this was added. Uh, the change or the amendment to the plan of finance that, uh, in this included this additional dates, um, was moved from December fourth to December fifteenth. So, for tonight, we're asking you to table this item and reconsider it on the eleventh of December.
I hear a motion to table?
Motion to table?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Number twelve, Pete.
Number twelve, consideration in action to adopt ordinance number twenty-twelve dash fifteen sixty-six, authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of approximately one point two million dollars in aggregate principal amount of City of Brownsville, Texas Combination Tax and Revenue Certificates of Obligation Series two, twenty-twelve B, securing the payment thereof by authorizing the levy of an annual ad valorem tax, and a pledge of certain surplus revenues of the city's airport, and approving and authorizing the execution of a paying agent registrar agreement, a purchase contract, and official statement, and all other instruments and procedures related thereto.
Honorable Mayor, members of the city commission, this item also applies to the one previously, so we're asking you to table this for them next week.
Move to table? Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. I do wanna congratulate Pete. Um, we got, uh, a notice of the rating for our city, uh, from Standard and Poor, uh, which, the one that downgraded the, the United States government, but we came from an A-plus to a double A minus.